Hello, this hearing is now being recorded. At this time, we're going to wait a few more minutes to see if anyone shows up virtually.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead. This is a rulemaking hearing. The rule subject is relating to hemp and affecting small businesses. This is an emergency rule. The emergency code references ATCP 22 Wisconsin Administrative Code. Rules clearinghouse number is EMR 2039 and the DAC cap docket number is 20-r-09. This hearing is now in session. My name is Melody Walker. I am a manager in the Bureau of Plant Industry for the Division of Agricultural Resource Management at the Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection. I will be conducting today's public hearing. This is a hearing on an emergency rule related to hemp and affecting small businesses. Specifically, this emergency rule repeals and replaces Wisconsin Administrative Code, Chapter ACTP 22, EMR 2039, that implements the hemp research pilot program. The repeal and replacement was necessary as the previous emergency rule was set to expire October 31, 2020. This rule converts the pilot program to the hemp program consistent with the parameters of the pilot program and thus provides the necessary regulatory framework to continue to allow Wisconsin's hemp growers to plant, grow, and process hemp pursuant to the Section 7606 of the Agricultural Act of 2014, the 2014 Farm Bill, and Wisconsin Statute 94.55, Section 2, instead of transitioning to the more restrictive framework established by the Agricultural Improvement Act of 2018, the 2018 Farm Bill. We are holding this hearing via Zoom meeting. I have initiated this hearing from Madison, Wisconsin. Today is Thursday, December 10, 2020, and the time is 1:00 p.m. This is the only scheduled hearing on this emergency rule. This rule was published in the Wisconsin State Journal on October 29. Copies of the rule have been available online since November 2 on the state legislature's website and in Administrative Register 779B, published by the Legislative Reference Bureau, as well as the Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection website. This hearing will give you a chance to express your opinions on this rule. The department is interested in what you have to say. You may provide facts, evidence, and arguments to support your opinions. The department will consider your views and those of other interested parties. You may give oral testimony today if you wish to do so. Based on the number of requests, we reserve the right to limit testimony time if it becomes necessary to allow others to present testimony. In addition, you may also submit written comments for the hearing record regardless of whether you testify today, but you must submit your written comments no later than midnight on December 17, 2020. The department is recording this hearing. We will include in the official hearing record all testimony received today. Written comments should be directed to Abby Graff, that's A-B-B-E-Y-G-R-A-F, at the Hemp Program, Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection, 2811 Agriculture Drive, PO Box 8911, Madison, Wisconsin, 53708-8911, or by email to abbyabbey.graf@wisconsin.gov. Next steps. Before we take oral testimony, I will present factual information to help you understand the content of this emergency rule. The department will consider today's testimony and all written comments we receive between December 1, 2020, when the hearing record opened, and midnight on December 17, 2020, when the hearing record for this emergency rule officially closes. The department will consider all comments received through this hearing process as we develop additional rules in the future to further align the Wisconsin hemp program with 2019 Wisconsin Act 68 and the federal hemp program requirements. The emergency rule took effect on October 29, 2020, and remains in effect until the date on which rules promulgated pursuant to Statute 94.55, Section 3W statutes takes effect. Appearance cards with testimony. Normally, appearance cards are available at hearings. Because this is a virtual hearing, we have a link in the chat box to fill out the appearance card. If you would like to provide oral testimony today and have not already done so, I ask that you complete the virtual appearance card by clicking on the link in the Zoom chat box, and we will collect those names. If you are on Zoom by phone and would like to provide oral testimony, we will take a few minutes to collect those names periodically throughout the hearing and get you in the queue to speak. I will call on individuals by name to provide their testimony. Before you give your testimony, please state your name and if you would like who you represent and whether you are for or against the rule or whether you are testifying for information. Based on the number of individuals we anticipate wanting to testify, we may need to limit testimony to about three minutes to ensure everyone has the opportunity to testify. As a reminder, you may submit written comments to Abby Graff at the department until midnight on December 17, 2020. Also, we plan to post the audio recording of this hearing on the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection website a day or two after the hearing for those who cannot participate in the hearing today. If you wish to provide oral testimony today, while I am reading the rule summary, you may open the link in the chat box and complete the virtual appearance card if you have not already done so. We will collect the names of those on the Zoom meeting by telephone that would like to provide testimony after I read the rule summary. At this time, I will read the rule summary. Rule summary. The rule subject relating to hemp and affecting small businesses. This is an emergency rule. Administrative Code reference, ATCP 22 Wisconsin Administrative Code. Excuse me. Rules clearinghouse number, EMR 2039, DAC cap docket number 20-r-09. This emergency rule converts the existing hemp pilot program, known as the Pilot Program, created under Wisconsin Statute 94.55, Section 3, by 2017 Act 100, as modified by 2019 Act 68 to a hemp research program or hemp program created under Wisconsin Statute 94.55, Section 2. This rule repeals and replaces the emergency rule, EMR 2016, which was published effective on June 27, 2020. This emergency rule takes effect upon a publication and remains in effect until the date on which rules promulgated pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 94.55, Section 3W, take effect. This rule converts the pilot program to the hemp program consistent with the parameters of the pilot program and thus provides the necessary regulatory framework to continue to allow Wisconsin's hemp growers to plant, grow, and process hemp pursuant to the Section 7606 of the Wisconsin, of the Agricultural Act of 2014, the 2014 Farm Bill, and Wisconsin Statute 94.55, Section 2, instead of transitioning to the more restrictive framework established by the Agricultural Improvement Act of 2018, the 2018 Farm Bill. So, rule content. This rule converts the pilot program to the hemp program because the current emergency rule was promulgated pursuant to expiring statutory authority. Continuing to operate a program after that date requires the department to repeal and replace emergency rule, EMR 2016. The updated rule converts the program and incorporates minor changes to reflect updated statutory authority. In this emergency rule, this emergency rule converts pilot program licenses and registrations to licenses and registrations under the hemp program. This no-fee conversion will occur automatically without any action necessary by licensees. New participants in the program will not be issued a license if, in the 10 years prior, the person was convicted of a felony relating to a controlled substance under state or federal law. New applicants must submit to a fingerprint-based background check. These will be conducted by the Wisconsin Department of Justice, who will use criminal history information from the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Applicants will pay for the costs associated with the criminal background check. Hemp processors must now pay an initial $150 license fee required by statute. Processors will not need to pay the annual registration in the same annual registration year as the payment of the initial processor license fee. This rule clarifies requirements for submitting a destruction notification form and the DAC cap approval of voluntary hemp destruction by licensees. This rule also updates the process for obtaining DAC cap approval of hemp varieties to allow participants to grow hemp varieties that have already been DAC cap approved. Licensees must still pre-notify DAC cap of the variety they intend to grow as is required by statute. This rule clarifies the required documentation for transportation of harvested unprocessed hemp from a growing location by a licensee or a person contracted by a licensee. This rule establishes factors DAC cap will consider when determining whether to refer a person producing hemp in violation of program rules, Wisconsin Statute 94.55, or this rule for prosecution under the Wisconsin Uniform Controlled Substances Act or applicable local possession of marijuana or nance. This rule also clarifies that orders enforcing this rule are subject to appeal pursuant to the appeal process. Fiscal impact. This emergency rule continues the regulatory structure related to growing hemp and applies to those who wish to participate in the hemp program. Currently, individuals or businesses choosing to grow or process hemp must pay all applicable program fees. This emergency rule adds the statutorily required processor license fee of $150, but waives the annual processor registration of $100 during the annual registration year the processor first obtains a license. The complete fiscal estimate is available on the legislative website. This rule continues the regulatory framework of the pilot program as it existed under the previous emergency rules with minor changes to ensure consistency with state law and to clarify rule language to reflect program practice. Therefore, the rule will not negatively impact small business as this rule does not make significant modifications to the regulation of the hemp industry as it currently exists. A complete business impact analysis is available on the legislative website. Next steps. Following today's public hearing, the department will consider all comments received today and throughout in the public comment period, which began on December 1 and ends at midnight on December 17. All public comments will be taken into consideration in the future development of the hemp program. This is the end of the rule summary.
Okay. Thank you, Melody, for reading the rule summary. And at this time, no appearance cards have been submitted. So if anyone currently on the call would like to give comment, please give your name and comment now. Okay. So at this time, it looks like there's no one on the call who would like to give comments. So we are now going to wait and give people some more time to enter the meeting and give
Hi, this is a test of the emergency broadcast system. This is only a test of the emergency broadcast system. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification. This is not a real emergency. This is just an emergency notification.
Okay, so at this time I'm gonna call this meeting to a close and end recording. Before I do so, I would like to remind everyone that if you're interested in submitting written testimony, please do so by 11:59 PM on Thursday, December 17th at abbey, A-B-B-E-Y dot graph, G-R-A-F, at wisconsin.gov or by US mail at W-Y-D-A-T-C-P, D-A-R-M dash hemp rule, P-O box 8911 Madison, Wisconsin 53708. This meeting is officially closed and the recording has ended.
Thank you for participating in today's meeting.